Ten fifteen seconds.
Thank you.
It's live on my end.
Already?
Yeah.
All right. So it's setting up on my side here.
Okay, when you're ready, you tell us.
Yep, there we go. You're good.
All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the June twenty fifth Special Town Commissioners Meeting. If we'll all stand to say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We have a moment of silence for all the military personnel out there protecting all of us. Thank you for that. I'll do a roll call as I see you on my computer, Commissioner Persinger. Here, Commissioner Jocinski.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
And last but not least, Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
And with us also, Bill Zoper, your town manager, Fred Townsend, the town attorney, and Kate Benazak, our town clerk-to-be. Thank you, Kate, for running the show for us. You have the agenda before you do a hearing. Motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion.
There's a motion by Mr. Bauer and I think seconded by Mr. Persinger. Okay. Maybe with Mr. Stevens. We'll find that one out. But anyway, hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Not hearing any, it's unanimous. No abstentions, unanimous. Kate, is there anyone for public comment?
Mr. Mashinsky with Playables is in the waiting room. I was gonna go ahead and bring him in.
Well, yeah, he's probably waiting for public comment as we get into the but that's all right, bring him on and then we'll probably have him come up during the during the discussion. How you do, sir? How you doing, Mr. Mashinsky?
Good, Mayor. How are you?
Good. We're not actually to your item yet, but you were the only one in there for public discussion. Do you have anything else you want to discuss other than your item?
No, no, I think I'm over.
I can't answer. Case there's no other people in the public agenda, public comment section. All right, then we'll start with the first public hearing. And I'm gonna read it off and then turn it over to Fred. Fred's gonna handle it from here on in. Public hearing regarding an ordinance to amend chapter one eighty-five subsection one eighty-five dash twenty-five D, open parentheses, one, open parentheses, A, open parentheses, subsection four of the municipal code of the town of Dewey Beach, Delaware, two thousand and five, as amended regarding entry eatery requirements. And I'm gonna let Mr. Townsend take over from there, and I believe we're gonna merge the items together. So go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. As was pointed out, we have two items noticed for public hearing today. One of which is a text amendment to our zoning code provides for an exception, or I should say, provides an exemption from the requirement to provide public restrooms in certain circumstances. And for those who are following along, we have a, we have two ordinances that were posted on this subject. And for the record, I'll just indicate that while I drafted one of them, the second one was drafted by Commissioner Persinger, and I approve of the changes that he's suggesting in those cases. It's rewording, doing a little rewording on line twenty and adding a little specification on line twenty-two that we're referring to patron areas as opposed to public areas. And because these are related items and because it's already apparent that we don't have a number of members of the public who wish to testify on these matters, it was my suggestion that we combine the public hearings and additionally, unless there's an objection to that, that we would also hold the public hearing on the second item as well, which is a public hearing regarding an ordinance of the Commissioners of the town of Dewey Beach approving a conditional use application submitted by Gee Bowls, Inc. to operate an eatery to be located at the property formerly known as District three thirty-four, map twenty point one eight, parcel forty-seven oh one. Anyone object to combining the public hearings? All right, with that, I'll make some quick opening statements regarding the first ordinance. The, what we learned was that in processing the application filed by Gee Bowls to operate a eatery of a takeout variety, we learned that that bathroom requirements, restroom requirements applied to all eateries, which would seem to work to prevent an eatery that operated as a carryout from existing in Dewey Beach, because it wouldn't have the patron area available to offer a restroom. So I'm I would ask at this point whether anyone is here who wishes to speak to that. Is Mr. Mashinsky still with us? I don't see him.
Kate can bring him up.
Could you do that, please?
Fred, is this for all of us or just Mr. Mashinsky?
We're gonna start with, with, with him and then we'll go to you. And if he says, if, if any of the members of the public who speak, and we may just have Mr. Mashinsky speak, generate any questions, then you'll have the benefit of their testimony before you start deliberating. Mr. Mashinsky, we're, at the present time, we've combined the two public hearings, but we're, we're we're speaking of, just to introduce the exception from the restroom requirement regarding takeout eateries. Can I, is it safe to say that you're in favor of, of that amendment to our zoning code? And you're muted right now. You might see that.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Yes, I am in favor.
Other than that, do you have anything to add?
I do not, not at this time.
Okay, all right. Kate, there are no other witnesses who'd like to, to speak at the present time? All right, and then additionally, we have your particular ordinance, Mr. Mashinsky, who's which would authorize the conditional use that is Gee Bowls or Playables. That ordinance was also posted. Are you familiar with the, with the ordinance?
Yes, in turning the, the retail shop into an eatery.
Yes, authorizing you to operate the eatery at that location?
Correct.
And have you reviewed the conditions that are listed as one through ten?
Yes.
And have you familiarized yourself with the conditions that were actually appear in the ordinance that we just discussed, and those are subsections A through H?
I don't have them in front of me. If we could go over them real quick, that would be great for me.
I think we can do that. No alcoholic beverages are to be served. If indoor seating is provided, it will be limited to thirty-five patrons. That doesn't apply to you. The third requirement, subsection C, relates to bathrooms. If we pass the ordinance when we get to it to it as an action item, then that will not be made to apply to your conditional use. If outdoor unenclosed tables or chairs are provided by the eatery, the hours of operation of the outdoor unenclosed area shall not exceed beyond one P M. That does not, or eleven P M., that does not apply to you either your proposed use. Subsection E is outside loudspeakers for the amplification of sound shall not be permitted in an eatery. Portable toilet shall not be permitted. Hours of operation, and this applies to all eateries, shall not be earlier than six in the morning and not after one A M. the following day. That's existing code. And the final is that operation of an eatery or cabaret shall meet any and all other conditions established by the Commissioners at the time of any initial or subsequent approval. And I think we may see one additional condition at least applied by the Commissioners. Do the Commissioners have any questions for the witness? Mr. Stevens?
No, I'll defer to Mr. Persinger.
Okay, Mr. Persinger?
Yeah, just, just one question. I, I think there has been some discussion about where the service window would be for your establishment. Initially, it was, it was going to be facing Route One. I think you had agreed to move it around the corner so that it would be facing the, on the south side of the building facing the parking lot. Would, would you have any objection to that being included as a condition in the ordinance?
Uh, no, I wouldn't. I understand, you know, we don't want traffic backing up or a line backing up onto Route One. We're fine with having the service window on, on the parking lot side.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Mr., I almost said DeeDees, as I'm reading your, your name, but Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cook.
Well, I, as I understand it right now, we're talking about the first the first ordinance, which would be the overall eateries themselves, not, not the specific eatery, so.
Well, we can, we can talk about either.
Oh, okay, so I just didn't want to confuse the two, because they're I, I have a question of Mr. Persinger, if it's all right. In your, in your amended version of this, it said, if indoor patron area or outdoor seating on the premises is provided, that's on line twenty, and on line twenty-two, it changes public to patron area. I understand line twenty-two. Wouldn't line twenty be better if it said if indoor patron or seating area or outdoor seating premises is provided? Wouldn't that in other words, you're talking about seating area and patron area inside? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just talking about the indoor patron area, and then you could add or indoor seating as well, but the thought was that you know, there could always be confusion about what seating is, you know, if, if you get approval for this and you drag in a bench along the wall to provide for your customers to wait for their orders, is that, is that seating or not? The idea was, let's, let's just provide a customer-friendly opportunity to have a restroom if there's any indoor patron area. And if there, there's no additional indoor seating, that's fine. The owner could then add indoor seating at any time. And I don't see any need for additional regulatory approval at that point if, if the business owner decided to do that.
In other words, if you had an indoor patron area and added seating, you do not feel that he would need regulatory approval up to thirty-five?
Not, not if you have already provided the restroom. You're, you're in conformance with everything else. The limit of thirty-five, you know, is, is just that. It's, it's a limit. And, you know, that's you know, whether you provide seating or not, that's, that's always gonna be there.
Gotcha, okay.
Mr. Stevens?
Uh, yes, I, I, you know, I don't wanna, I like to make things very clear. I like the language of the indoor/outdoor seating. For example, if Mr. Mashinsky was, if it was the steps that lead up and it was a foot back from a counter perspective to allow a door to open, then somebody could say, well, that's an indoor patron area, even though there could not be any seating. So I, you know, if you understand, if you know where I'm talking about, with a t-shirt back, the door opens in. So if there was a counter right there, that little two-by-two, somebody could construe, misconstrue that as an indoor patron area. So I, I think it, I like the idea of indoor/outdoor seating or saying that the indoor patron area would have to allow more than a few people just into a threshold. You know, does that make any sense?
I understand. Mr. Persinger, you wish to comment on that? I know that I've got Mr. Jocinski who's waiting to be heard, but do you want to reply to that comment?
I mean, I, I understand the concern. The, the other concern I have is that it's prevents it, the language here prevents an enforcement problem also, so that if you have an indoor patron area, you get initial approval without as a carryout-only facility and, and you don't have indoor seating, that it's awfully easy for, for an owner or after a change of owner for them to, to create, you know, a situation where they, they pull in seating and you know, without realizing that they had the bathroom requirement. You know, whatever we do here, we're still gonna have businesses, meteries out there that aren't consistent, that don't conform to these, to these regulations. And I can think of one business already that is a longstanding business that has indoor, indoor seating and no restroom. So we're not gonna fix that, but I was just trying to provide a consistent way of you know, allowing people to have access to a restroom where there's an indoor patron area and it can be provided. I, I'm not sure what you were defining. There is an indoor area. I mean, I'm not, for this particular business, I don't think there is a way to construe the available space there as an indoor patron area. So I don't think it creates a business, a problem for this business. I would think if, if it creates a, a problem in the future, we could always deal with that particular situation and specifics of that particular, particular situation if we're faceless.
Gary, my only thought, I don't know how much work Mr. Mashinsky's gonna do on, on the building, but if you're familiar with it, the door does open into the left, and I assume that there's gonna be a counter right there. And if there's a counter right there, somebody is moving in, two feet in, and I wouldn't want anybody in town to think that that was a patron area.
Right, no, I understand. My, I thought we were talking about just a window, you know, so the patrons would not be actually stepping into anything. But maybe Mr. Mashinsky could clarify that for us.
Yeah, just to clarify, no one will be stepping foot inside the building other than employees. Everything will be ordered from the outside.
Mr. Jocinski?
Yeah, I have a question for Mr. Mashinsky. Right now, the conditional use is written that you guys clean up in the mornings, but there's no reference to on the days you're open that you empty the garbage at the end of the evening. Is that something you're okay with if we ask that any day you're open? Basically, part of the closing process is that you empty the, the trash cans that are provided for people.
Absolutely. You know, that's part of our closing process.
I assume so. I just wanted to.
Yeah, we, we don't want trash looming around where bugs and things could, could start to gather. So yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I figured it'd be fine, but I just wanted to ask the question. And so when it's time to vote, Gary, I'd like to add that. The, on the ordinance itself, kind of similar to Commissioner Stevens talking about the red text on twenty. You know, we, we want to be sure that we don't, you know, for lack of a better word, punish a business who does something, you know, just completely incidental and say, hey, oh, you gotta have a bathroom now, right? But at the same time, I, I kind of wonder if, you know, some people might kind of get around things. And one of the things that you put in your proposed red line, Commissioner Persinger, is the, the phrase on premise. And I'm just wondering that, you know, if people provided a bunch of picnic tables off their presence, but they were intended for the people who use that eatery, and this doesn't apply to this eatery, this applies to really any future eatery, they would not need to have a restroom, because they would say, hey, that's off my premises. That's part of an adjoining business, but I put those tables out there so people could eat their food. And I, I just, I, I want a sense from the Commissioners if they think that that's something that we need to tweak or not, to be more precise.
Just, just a quick comment. I mean, I, the on premises was actually part of Fred's original draft, and I, and I left it there. I, I don't know if, I mean, I would leave this to Fred. I don't know if there's anything we could actually do about tables that are provided by a business and it's not on the business premises. I, you know, I'm not sure. I, I, well, let me, I suppose there could be a situation if, if it's a, some sort of shared ownership arrangement, a a sort of condo arrangement, and they get permission from the condo to put tables on condo-owned property, then that would, would that be on premises or not, Fred? I'm, I'm not sure.
Yeah, my, that was exactly the scenario that concerned me was that if, if someone walking by would notice that there appears to be an outdoor area associated with this facility, that it would not trigger a bathroom requirement unless it was on premises. So the premises of the Gee Bowls, for instance, is the, is the interior of their, of their operation. There are no patron area inside. And I was worried about exactly that situation that you described. I think that situation may exist in an, in vicinity of a couple different restaurants where there is a picnic table that people can go sit at. And without the language on premises, which I think is the only thing we, I think we have to define the requirements of an establishment based on its premises and not based on its surroundings. So I, I wanted to stay away from an argument that an off-premises feature is now potentially gonna trigger an on-premises requirement of a bathroom. So that's why I drafted it the way I did. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jocinski?
It does answer my question. I, I just wonder if we just say indoor, if indoor patron area, outdoor seating is provided and leave the premises out. If the owner of the, if an owner of a future eatery provides seating, they're expected to have a bathroom and just leave it at that and, you know.
So if you take the Gee Bowls example, the Gee Bowls premises don't include any outdoor area. So if if a picnic table and some chairs show up, then potentially that would at least create an argument that they are there to benefit the patrons of Gee Bowls, and consequently, they should be required to offer a bathroom, which they can't offer. That, that's the scenario I was concerned with.
Well, and, and to that point, I mean, my question was to the other Commissioners, do we want that type of situation to trigger a bathroom requirement? It's, you, you've kind of explained technically how it kind of goes through, but I want to hear from my other Commissioners if they think that type of scenario triggers a bathroom requirement or not.
I see, I see a lot of hands.
Yeah, but I'll, go ahead. The feeling is if you have indoor seating, you should have an indoor bath. That's it.
Not.
So, so that's, that's one view. Mr. Mayor?
You know, we know very well that the patron, or the, the premises is not just inside that building. That's where they prepare the food. Their, their patrons are on their premises when they come up to that window. It, it, it's the only logical way to look at it. Now, I don't know how you solve the problem, and I don't know if it's a problem to be solved about somebody in the adjoining business putting tables out. That wouldn't be this gentleman's problem. It wouldn't be his fault. If he put up a sign saying they're seating over there or telling people they're seating over there, then it would be his problem. But I don't know that we can address that problem. I don't think it's a, I don't think we have a viable option to address that problem.
Mr. Bauer? You're muted, Mr. Bauer.
Sorry about that. I look at it like the insurance business, and Bill Stevens could probably weigh in on this more specifically, but your premises, you know, let's say somebody slipped and, and fell. First, you know, when they investigate it, they say, was it on their premises or was it off of their premises, right? So if something happened in the parking lot, you know, is that their premises? You know, how, we're for some reason, we're, I think we're conflating what the premises really are. I mean, that they're in a box in there, and that's, that's their premises. I don't think anything outside of that is really belonging to them. I mean, it's, you know, it, you wouldn't win an insurance case that way, that's for sure. But, you know, I don't know any other way to look at it. I mean, the premises are, you know, what they have their lease on. There's some square footage. There's, you know, that's what they have. So that's my two cents worth on it.
Thank you. Mr. Persinger?
Yeah, I think we should leave the wording as referring to just on premises. You know, we're, we're talking about approving a conditional use application for a business that that doesn't have any real premises outside of, of the building itself, doesn't have any indoor patron area. And what we're talking about here is a situation that could happen in the future. What if they found, you know, a few square feet and they could put a picnic table on it and then make that available to their patrons? You know, we, we've never had a situation where we've looked at an ordinance and the fact that a business is violating that ordinance and saying, okay, well, you, you have to go back and meet all the conditions of the ordinance. You know, we would simply go back to them and say, well, you have to remove that thing that you just did that put you in violation of the ordinance. So we wouldn't tell them to go back and build a bathroom. We tell them to get rid of that picnic table. So I mean, I, I think we, we use the, leave the on-premises language as it is here.
I presume, Mr. Mashinsky, you agree with that?
Yes, that's accurate.
Anyone else? Mr. Cook, do you want to speak further on this?
No, I just, I, I understand, Mr. Persinger, did you say to leave the on-premises in as it is?
Yes, I did.
Okay, that's fine, because I, I just, I don't think there's gonna be any problem in the future. I hope not, but remember, we're talking about two different items here. We're talking about this one particular business and any business in the future that wants to deal with the, the ordinance covering covering this, this type, these eatery businesses. So don't just think about this one business that we're discussing here. That's all.
Anything more on the ordinance?
Which ordinance?
I'm sorry, on the text amendment?
Which, what amendment are we referring to here?
The amendment of the ordinance relating to requirements that apply to eateries in general, which is one eighty-five dash twenty-five, D one A four D.
Was that the one Gary proposed?
It's one that, yes.
Okay. But my only issue with that is we put some hours of operation in here, and I know we have conditional uses that vary from what this word it says, right?
Okay, are you, are you referring?
Line G, line thirty, section, hours of operation should not be earlier than six A M. and not after one o'clock.
Yeah, Mr. Bauer, that's an existing, that's a provision of our existing code that's not being proposed to be revised. That's what the law is for eateries.
Right, but we've granted conditional uses that people stay open later than one o'clock.
Yeah, but it never changed the existing law. That's what it is right now.
Okay. We're not changing anybody's hours of operation, then, if I understand that correctly.
No. Mr. Townsend, that's correct?
Yes, that's correct. So, yeah, I think at, at this point, if we're done with the, with the text amendment, we should ask for Mr. Mashinsky, just for the record, to just briefly tell us about his proposed operation and then answer any questions that the Commissioners have regarding Playables.
Well, have we, are we done with the text itself? The, the suggestions of the window at the south side wall and the suggestions of trash pickup, weren't they going to be included?
Those, those are items that relate to the ordinance approving the conditional use, and those are items that would be taken up during the action item part of the agenda, which is after this public hearing. We're still on the.
I'm sorry, I thought we were talking both items.
Mr. Mashinsky, could you tell us, just for the record, about your, your, you know, a brief bit about your operation? I know many of the Commissioners are already familiar with it, having perhaps observed the planning commission activity on it, but so we'd like to hear from you. I think we also heard from you when we introduced the, the prospect of approving your proposed use, but if you could tell us for the record what you plan to do at that location?
Sure. So what we're planning on doing is taking the, the old t-shirt shop from the Bottle and Cork location, converting that into a commercial kitchen. It's a hundred and fifty-seven square feet. It will be takeout only. Excuse me. It will be takeout only. Our service window for patrons will be on the south side of the building, which is adjacent. Excuse me. Uh, it will be takeout only. Our service window for patrons will be on the south side of the building, which is adjacent to the parking lot. You know, we're looking to stay, our hours of operation, although they should fall within that 6:00 AM to, to 1:00 AM the following day. We're looking more along the lines of 7:00 or 8:00 AM to about 10:00 PM. Especially, uh, weekends might be a little bit longer if, if necessary, depending on, on crowds and, uh, what we're looking at. Um, other than that, um, meeting all the requirements that have been put forth by the commission, uh, as far as trash. And meeting all the local ordinances, um, is, is exactly what we plan on doing.
Any additional questions for Mr. Masinsky from the commissioners? And.
So it is your intent to have the, the window on the south wall and it is your intent to. Pick up, uh, in the morning when you come in and pick up, uh, at night before you leave, uh, when trash.
Sure, um, you know, our, our intent is to not have to pick anything up in the morning, uh, because it all should have been taken care of the night before.
Well, but most businesses have to clean up the sidewalk area in front of their business.
Sure.
Miss Ben, is that just for the record, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard? No. Okay, if there are no more questions for Mr. Mr. Bauer.
Oh, I was just going to motion to approve this.
Well, um, I think the first step will be to close the public hearing and then move to the, the action item part of the agenda. Is there anything else from anyone? All right, Mr. Cook, I think I can, I can declare that the public hearing is now closed and we can move on with the agenda.
Okay, then, but, uh, so is the public hearing closed for both items now?
Yes.
Okay. Then we would then go to item number one, which is discuss and possibly vote, correct, Mr. Townsend?
Yes, sir.
Discuss and possibly vote to approve an ordinance to amend chapter 185. Subsection 185 dash 25D. 1A4 municipal code, the town of Dewey Beach Delaware, 2005, as amended regarding eatery requirements. Is there, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion move to pass it as, as read?
Just as read.
Requested amendment.
Wait, is there a second?
Yes, with a requested amendment.
Second with a requested amendment. Mr. Jazinski, go ahead.
Yeah, so as we've discussed, we, are we, are we just doing the, um, are we just doing the eatery, uh, one or are we doing both in this motion?
Just the eatery.
Just, yeah.
Right.
Just eatery, then there is no, then there is no amendment. Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Bauer, second by Mr. Jazinski. Is there any further discussion? I'm sorry, Mr. Townsend.
Right, so remember we have, we had two different proposals for this ordinance. I want to make sure we know what we're, we're voting on. I don't think there was any. Uh, debate over the subject of line 22, changing that word public to patron. And then the question is about line 20. So I think the motion should make clear how line 20 is to read. And that line 22 is to substitute the word patron for public.
Okay, the maker of the motion, Mr. Bauer, do you understand, is it your understanding that the line 22 would read. Patron area rather than public area?
Correct.
Right. Is that enough, Mr. Townsend?
Oh, well, line 20, I think is where we had some debate. Line 20 is, are we going to trigger a bathroom requirement? Um, by simply having patron area or only if the indoor seating is provided? That's the, that's the substantive difference between the two versions. As I read it.
Well, line 20 though, I, I, Mr. Persinger, you're the one that wrote this. And then there was discussion about whether it should be patron and then I suggested indoor seating. And Mr. Stevens, I believe he suggested this indoor seating. So.
So I guess, if I could interrupt, Mr. Bauer, what, what is your intention with regard to this motion? And then we'll have deliberations over it and see if we can reach a consensus.
Well, I, I think, you know, no patron area, right? I mean, that's, we talked about that being outside of their. Their premise, right? So that's my intent.
Well, remember we're talking about, uh, off, we're talking right now about the overall eatery regulation. Not just this business, so.
So I want to be clear, is the motion for Commissioner Persinger's, uh, changes or is the motion for the ordinance as it was originally written?
That's what we're trying to establish.
As it was amended and as it was amended, he wrote, Mr. Persinger amended it to say. If indoor patron area or outdoor seating on premises is provided. And then small A, and then in line 20, it was, it was patron area rather than public area. That's what, that was the amended resolution. Mr. Bauer put forth. The motion to accept it as it was written and, and then you'd seconded it. And then Mr. Stevens asked if there, I'm excuse me, Mr. Townsend asked if there was any dissension among what we were actually voting on. I don't see it as any, I see it as motion from Mr. Bauer said it as it was read by Mr. Persinger. And you seconded, is that, is that the way everybody sees it?
Yeah, I just want, I just want.
This is getting more confusing than.
That's what he, that's what his motion is for.
Mr. Bauer, I'm sorry, say that again?
Yeah, no, I mean, this is just getting more confusing as we, we talk about it. I mean, we have an ordinance here. And what, what are we trying to do? Define patron area again, or I, I don't understand.
No, 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 no. All we asked is, when you proposed your amendment, did you propose it as written, I mean, your motion. As written amended by Mr. Persinger?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jazinski, when you seconded, did you propose it as amended by Mr. Persinger?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Jazinski, thank you. And so we have a motion and a second on the floor and we understand what we're voting on. We're voting on. It includes item number C, if indoor patron area or outdoor seating on premises is provided. A minimum of one handicap unisex restroom shall be provided. Setrooms shall have unimpeded access directly from the patron area of the eatery. And not through the food preparation area or storage area. That's what we're voting on. Is there any other discussion on? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any against, say nay. Any abstention? Passed unanimously. Now that's the overall eatery ordinance. We still have to discuss the, the business itself, the ordinance to allow the business to open. Is that right, Mr. Townsend?
That's right. That's item two on your agenda.
Yes, thank you. I confused my paperwork here just a minute. Uh, I normally am not totally confused, but I got messed up there with the paperwork. So item number two. Discuss and possibly vote to approve an ordinance to approve a conditional use application submitted by. GEE Gee Bowls Incorporated. To operate an eatery to be located at the property, property formerly known as District 334, map 20.18. Partial 47 point, I believe it's 01. I'm sorry, I wrote it on top of it. Is that correct, Mr. Townsend?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, we're on that item now. Now, is there a motion to, well, I guess we, we still on that item, Mr. Townsend. We have to do a couple of items. That's where we're talking about the south wall having the service window in it. And the, and the trash being picked up twice. That would be, Mr. Persinger, your hands up?
Yeah, I would suggest that we add a second sentence to condition number five. And the sentence would read, food shall be ordered and delivered. From a customer service window on the south side of the building facing an adjacent parking area. Is that acceptable to, uh? Acceptable.
Okay, and that's condition number five, when the ordinance that referred to us from planning and zoning?
Yes.
You want to repeat that so Kate can get it fully?
Yeah, this would be, um, a second sentence to be added to condition number five. And it would read, food shall be ordered and delivered from a customer service window on the south side of the building facing parking area.
Okay. Did, did everybody understand that?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Is there, is there any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's, I'm pretty clear there. There's a. An Easter, uh, easterly entrance on the south side that Mr. Masinsky could use. We're not suggesting that he's going to cut the trees down. That are outside. On the south side of that building and we put a window in. Whereas, I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just wanting everyone to be clear. Come around the corner, there's trees and shrubbery and there's a doorway up.
As I see it, the only thing that is suggested is that the eatery, the window access to the patrons be on the south side of that. Section, not, not on any other side.
All right, fair enough.
Mr. Jazinski.
And then, um, the text for the second, I think we discussed changing would be on item eight. Uh, Kate, if you could write down if everyone agrees to it.
What item, Mr. Jazinski?
On item eight, text at the end that says exterior trash receptacles to be emptied at the close of business.
You were breaking up on me. Would you repeat that, sir?
Uh, item eight, add the text that says exterior trash receptacles to be emptied at close of business.
Okay. All right, does everybody understand that? And from there, Mr. Townsend, do we now have to read the entire ordinance of the commissioners, you know, from, that was set to us? From planning and zoning as you wrote it?
You do not.
Okay, so we, we understand, uh, is there a motion on the floor to accept the ordinance? That, as amended?
Yes, accepted.
Accepted by Commissioner Bauer as amended. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Persinger, I believe. Sorry about that. I didn't see the hands. Uh, there's a proper motion on the floor and a proper second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against, say nay. Any abstention? Kate, that's unanimous and you'll be able to pull it off the, I was about to say tape, but you'll be able to pull it off this video. The exact wording. Mr. Persinger?
Yeah, I would just, uh, like to thank Mr. Musinski for his, uh, continued patience, uh, in dealing with our process. I know it has been a bit longer than. He would like, but, um, you know, hopefully we have successfully concluded what you, you need to move forward.
Mr. Persinger, you're stealing my thunder because I've already written that and, and, and I sincerely apologize. But I was the one that, uh, didn't understand that it took a two week, 15 day notice versus a, uh, uh, seven day notice, Mr. Musinski. And your mic is off if you want to.
No, I really do appreciate. I know it takes a lot to get this together and, and you guys have to follow the, the protocols that have been set. Uh, there is a reason for it, uh, so I do understand it. Um, it has set us back just a little bit, but we will make do and, and we'll make the best of it.
We certainly appreciate it. So I hope your business does very well. I hope it does well as well as all the other businesses right now are doing because. Business is surely booming in Dewey Beach.
For sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Anything from anybody else concerning this item? Then we'll move on to the next item. I believe. Item number three. And I have to take a little blame on this one too. Discuss and possibly vote to appoint Julie Johnson. As the chairperson of the Board of Adjustment for a term of three years. Normally we have a short bio. I had asked Ms. Ms. Johnson to send it to me. She said she would. I forgot about it. So as much as you already know her very well, but so I don't think there'd be any problem with having, having the bio there. Is there a motion to, to move to accept Ms. Johnson as?
Motion.
Well, I, I see Mr. Stevens hand up first. I don't know who said it first. I'll say Mr. Stevens' motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bauer. You're quick, Mr. Bauer. Probably proper motion on the floor and a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against, say nay. Any extension? Miss Ben Azak, that's unanimous. We'll move on down the line if it's all right with everybody. Town manager comments?
Monday the 28th at 8:30 movie night. Wednesday, the 30th is bonfire night at 8:30.
Mr. Zoper, is that all?
Yes.
Okay. A, a, any questions for the town manager from the commissioner?
Sure, what movies play?
Ralph breaks the internet. I've already looked.
Okay, we'll move on, folks. Commissioners comments. Commissioner Bauer.
Yeah, I just have one. Um, I don't know if you have all seen the, uh, press release that, uh, Speaker Swartzoff had put out and Senator Lopez. Uh, about the cooperation we're getting with Verizon.
Oh, very good, yeah.
The plan is, uh, well, I can, I'll read it, uh, just real short. Uh, many of you have reached out to myself and Senator Lopez about the 5G poles being set up along the dune line in Dewey Beach. We are proud to announce a breakthrough that we have negotiated. Uh, we have heard your concerns and have appreciated your patience. We cherish and value the rich natural beauty of our coastline. And we're upset and disappointed to see where the poles were installed last year. And are urging Verizon plans to begin relocating some of the poles as early as this fall. We are pleased with the responsiveness of Verizon to bring meaningful resolution. So I think that, that's the best news I've heard today.
I agree with you, Mr. Bauer, and thank you for all your effort on that.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Jazinski?
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I don't know if one announced this before, but you kind of had a small litter problem in town. Just wanted to thank, uh, Stefanzo, Jimmy O'Connor and, uh, Steve McGarry from the Hyatt Woodies and the Starbird respectively. Uh, for having fun or, or funding, uh, uh, a machine to help the trash, the town pick up trash. In the morning when, uh, it really.
Yeah. It is very generous of them.
Yes, it was. They, they consistently helped the town out. Matter of fact, most of the businesses in town make a consistent effort. Uh, Mr. Persinger?
Um, the only thing I want to mention is I, I know that our charter amendments have been moving through the state legislature. I believe they got through the senate side and they were. It was a hearing earlier this week on the, on the house side. I don't know if the town solicitor could provide us with any, uh, update on that.
Well.
Mr. Townsend, go ahead, sir.
The, um, House committee did release it. Then I, I'm going to ask Mr. Bauer. He has his finger on the pulse of these things. Do you know if it's on an agenda, Mr. Bauer, for the House?
I, I can't confirm that. I believe it is, but I'm not positive. Let me confirm that. I'll send everybody an email.
Thank you. Is that all, Mr. Persinger?
That's all I had. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer.
Mr. Stevens?
No comments, sir.
And Mayor Cook's comments. I again want to thank, uh, Speaker Swartzoff and Senator Lopez for all their work. To get these telephone poles moved and, and Mr. Bauer, thank you for, for working with them. The town manager also, thank you for working with them. Uh, we certainly, as commissioners, we, we certainly have, uh, appreciate all the work you both have done with that. So thank you. I don't have anything further. Does anybody else have anything further for the good and welfare of this town? If not, I hear most to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Move by Mr. Stevens, second by Mr. Bauer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's, uh, 49 minutes.